Well, good afternoon. If we are on, we are here for the May 6, 2020 Planning Commission. We have an open discussion for today, but let's start by calling the role of Ms. Towne.
Chairman Brown?
Here.
Mayor Snyder?
Here.
Director, or no, Director Murphy?
Present.
Mrs. Sickinter?
Present.
Mr. Brown, John Brown?
Absent.
As I said before, we're here on an open discussion. There's really not a item on the agenda that we'll be voting on. Rather, this is an opportunity for Nick Legenfelter, Vice President of Development of PLK, to speak with us about the recent activities at the U.S. Playing Card. I'm sure a lot of people here have seen what's been going on and have a lot of questions, a lot of concerns, maybe, that they would like to just know what's going on. So with that, I'll let Mr. Legenfelter come and address the commission. Again, we're not voting on anything. This is just an opportunity for them to give us an update and hopefully engage in the commission and a discussion on what they'd like to see or what they anticipate going on in the future of the property.
Thank you. Again, my name is Nick Legenfelter. I'm here with Colleen Reynolds of VSC Advisors. They help us on our making sure we get our community engagement right as well. So if there's any questions there, she'll be glad to help. So again, Nick Legenfelter, PLK Communities. We're a locally owned and operated apartment developer here in Cincinnati. We own, develop, and operate over 5,200 apartments here in the city. So this is a site we know. Many of you have heard the story. Peter Kleinkamp actually bought some of his first properties right here in Norwood. So this is, went to school at Xavier and started the company here locally. So we have over 160 employees here that we have just in the Cincinnati region, and this is our home. So this is an important site to us. As many of you probably saw, we in Norwood, thank you for posting online the video that we put out today. I really appreciate that. We've had fantastic engagement so far, but we knew that we needed to do something to start the ball rolling, to keep everybody informed. We were not sitting idle, as we've been saying, and we are moving this forward. So this is a very important site to us. It's very critical. There's a lot that happened behind the scenes, a lot of significant remediation that needed to take place. You've probably heard the stories about the tunnels, things like that. So working with Mark Reed and the Building Department has been fantastic, and we truly appreciate how great the city has been. Honestly, we heard some stories of the permitting, like the process might be a little more difficult, but we've honestly had none. They've been out there. They've been great. Aurora, our contractor, has nothing but positive things to say. So I do thank you for that as well. So overall, we wanted to just come and introduce ourselves, introduce the project. We would like to come back in the next month or so and be able to specifically request one change to the zoning text. Right now, the zoning currently is zone heavy manufacturing. If you read the text, heavy manufacturing also allows anything in light manufacturing or the central business district. The one thing it does not allow is residential. So what we're looking at is, we would like some approval from your end at some point in the near future to be able to go ahead and start planning that residential piece. We are leading this site with residential. What I will say is, the residential side, we are looking at multiple tiers of pricing. So we don't just want to go out with just high-end apartments. We're trying to make this a balanced development for the community. We are currently looking at an active adult piece as well. That would be a 55-plus population. This is not senior housing. This is just empty nester housing for people that maybe want to sell their homes, stay in the area. So we are looking at that as also being a component of the development. So we have apartments, townhomes, what we call the active adult sections. We want three sections of the development to be. What are they going to look like? I don't know yet. So the reason we did the survey today was we really wanted to get some feedback from the community. We want some public spaces. We want to be able to make sure this is, you know, whether it's retail, what we're calling currently our market hall that somebody wants to use, we want to make sure that's something people want first. So what I will tell you is before noon, we had almost 150 surveys filled out this morning already. And again, that video's been seen almost 4,000 times today, which is fantastic. We are blown away. Never seen public engagement like this, and we do thank the community for that. So I do want you to know, like, you know, the surveys have been great. I think one of the big things we saw right away was, you know, 80% of the people want to see some type of public art component. So, you know, whether that's murals or whether that's some type of art somewhere on the site. But I will say, it's fantastic to know of all those surveys that we're hitting over 80% just on that item. So I don't know what that'll look like, but what we're trying to do is make sure we're taking the public's feedback and incorporating it somehow into the development. So with that, I'll be glad to take any questions you have. But again, I just wanted to introduce ourselves and talk about how we do want to come forward because in order to site plan, in order to start designing buildings, in order to get into conversations like what are materials, things like that, we need to know that we can actually put it on the site.
Yeah, that, and then also just hearing from the neighborhood, you know, really what their vision for this site was, what the history of the site has meant to them, something that we've been already getting a lot of posts and traction on with our Facebook page. And, you know, we're just excited to hear from folks. And obviously, given COVID-19 and all the barriers, we couldn't do it in person like we had originally planned. But our architects, Shook Kelly, they're based out of North Carolina, and they're fabulous, and they've done some incredible work across the country. And we've been brainstorming with them about some workshops and what not to do with COVID-19. We didn't want to just not engage our neighbors. We just have to get a little creative. So you'll see us doing more videos and more engagement. But we, yeah, like Nick said, we are blown away by the response in just the 10 hours that we've had stuff up. It shows that people are online and interested and passionate about getting involved, which is exactly what we wanted. We want to build something that the community is proud of, that they feel like they've had a hand in. But we definitely are going to need your help and your wisdom to move some of these pieces forward, too.
I'll say mine, but I would like to open it up to the other commissioners if they would like to provide any feedback. Any initial thoughts about what's been going on? I know we haven't met in a while. Just taking off the chain.
Well, looking at zoning stuff, you know, there's a PUD over the area, right, overlay over it. So we can work through the planning. And I think that was all part of, part of the process and part of what everybody was thinking from the get-go. So that's not like you're, oh, we're changing zoning. That's not a big change to us. And you're not, you know, so that, we can work through, through that with you. We want to see a first-class, you know, project going on there also. We'll be working to make sure that those things are done. We are, we are extremely, you know, excited about seeing some renderings and seeing some of the things. You guys have been painting, you've been painting all those visuals for us, but that is, that is a big part of it and making sure that we have all of those things in place. So that's fine. My understanding is that some of the demolition stuff is still going on. You don't have any.
It'll be through the end of August. So right now, I mean, you'll see the majority of the buildings come down probably the next month or two. They're actually going to start punching, what we call punching through the front wall, hopefully by this weekend. We, the reason we hadn't done that, one, for dust control. I think that was probably, probably the primary reason was just to control the dust there. We're going to have to bring in different equipment to spray it, keep it controlled that way. And two is actually create a place to put the material. So there's no real place to put it in front of the building. So we were trying to make sure we were doing that in a good fashion. As you probably all saw as well, we are upcycling, upcycling a significant amount of materials that we had not originally planned to do. But it has been really cool. So we're trying to keep.
Wait, go back a little. You went through that too quick.
Sorry, sir.
Talk about your upcycling. What are you talking about with that? Give us a good explanation of how that's beneficial, not only to you guys, but also to the environment and everything.
And what is it, more importantly?
So upcycling is taking existing materials and repurposing them so they can be used again. So what that is, is for instance, we had one building that was solid wood on the property that did have some damage from moisture, but we were able to save probably 70 to 80% of the wood in that building.
Floorboards.
So floorboard, everything from floorboards to main support beams. Some of those main support beams are the size of tree trunks. So it's, you know, actually, we are going to end up reusing some of those on the site. So one, a couple of the buildings we're keeping, we, were damaged pretty significantly. So we're keeping some of those main support beams and repurposing them because there's no way we can find wood like that today to help restore that building. Things like the brick. So the brick, the face brick is, we kind of had, we actually put a post online the other day about this. The face brick's that more yellowish brick that everybody's familiar with, and there's what's known as common brick behind it. Most of those common brick walls are anywhere between three and eight bricks thick. Instead of doing a wood frame like we do today, they would have just added another row of bricks. There's a lot of them. That common brick, there's significant demand in communities, especially down south where they don't have to deal with the freezing that we do. There's a group out of Alabama and Louisiana, they're actually, not from us, but purchasing from Aurora, those bricks. They have crews there cleaning them up. They're repurposing them, and they'll become sidewalks and roads down south. So a lot of these materials are not going into the fill the way they normally would. I would also point out, a lot of these buildings are absolutely empty anyway. There was no other equipment in them. So there's a significant amount of what we call upcycling. So instead of recycling, where you actually physically re, you know, paper, you make in a pulp and make a new sheet of paper, this, they just clean the brick and they can actually reuse it in sidewalks and roads. So that's what the upcycling portion is. Anything like that that we can save, that doesn't go into the landfill, that can be reused somewhere else, we're absolutely doing. The only thing that really couldn't do much with was the windows, because a lot of the windows had asbestos packing or glazing around them, and they just had to be dismantled, put in plastic bags, and shipped in specific containers. So, but yeah, I mean, honestly, that's really important to us because, I mean, listen, we can do these things. It doesn't cost us anymore to do it. A lot of these guys will actually come, take it right off the site for us, bring their semis in. So, you know, if that adds another month or two, big deal because we're not impacting the environment anymore than we have to. So.
Good. We all like that.
Mr. Murphy, Ms. Sickinter, do you have any?
Have you had any specific complaint from anybody? Noise? I mean, I've heard of nothing.
I've heard of no complaints. I do know that we had a, one of the subcontracting truck, so Aurora was down probably a significant portion of their staff for a while because of the COVID stuff, whether you had a temperature or not, but we could return for two weeks. So we, they have supplemented some truck drivers. I guess one of the truck drivers hit a sign that we, they paid the fine or they got a fine, so we'll take care of it. But I've heard no major complaints at all.
So far, so good.
Yeah.
And you mentioned apartments and townhomes.
Yes.
So it's going to be both?
So correct. So we don't know, the one thing about the townhomes that's a little different is usually townhomes come at a later phase. So what we're looking at, is this something that we might rent and then sell down the road, or how do we build that? Because our goal when we build this development, and we're working on a site plan that hopefully we can present at the next meeting, is that it always looks complete. There's no way we can build this entire site at once. We know that. When we build it out, it's going to be over $100 million. So, but phase one, what we're looking at is roughly 180 apartments, around 20 townhomes, kind of around more of the water features or whatever we put them on. And then you're going to have some retail and as well as some, the market hall.
Green space.
Green space, things like that. So like, a lot of the public improvements will all come in upfront. So whether that's a dog park or whether that's a family park or whatever, we'll make sure that's an upfront. But as far as the apartments go, again, back to, we're looking at multiple product types. So whether it may be, some of the buildings are three-story walk-up, which you don't have to charge the same amount as a building with an elevator. But we might do all different types of those buildings that look cohesive in one development, so that we hit three or four price points when we deliver that to the market. So there's, there's a space for everybody.
And would the entertainment district be a phase one also?
Correct. Yes, me too.
Yeah, because as Nick said, we want, we want it to feel complete, even though, you know, we're not going to see the full development until five or eight years down the road. But in, you know, three to five, what does it feel like to be an active user? What's that space look like? If you see an empty parking lot, it's not in the middle, it's on the edges, and that's something you can build future office, future whatever. You know, it's certainly, we want it to be phased appropriately so that people continue to love it, we learn about how the space is being used. But that takes us planning now for traffic patterns, all the public infrastructure that needs to be placed in the next couple of years. I mean, that, we just have to get really, we'd really nail that down and make sure that's a solid plan. So you'll, we'll know generally, but yeah, it'll be phased.
One thing we know, too, is we know we have to create jobs. Like, that's critical. So what is that jobs, what are those jobs? Where are they at on the site and what do they look like? What I will say is this, we've always planned to have six to seven acres on the highway somehow dedicated to that piece. Whether that's two office buildings or one office building in a hotel, all of that land on the highway, we've always planned to dedicate, and we will dedicate to be that. Whether it's, again, do you want a five-story office building like you see it look with? We don't know what that demand is going to be right now, but we still plan. There's never changed our mind that that will always be dedicated to having great jobs and revenue for the city.
I guess let me start by saying that I, the loss of Playing Card, the building tearing that down, really was hard, is hard for me to wrap my head around. I have a master's in historic preservation, bachelor's in urban planning, very familiar with these type of issues that we're facing in site planning, et cetera. To see it torn down was very hard for me. But I know that no matter how I feel, what has happened in the past is not going to do any good. So as a planning commissioner, I'm taking the position of, what is our role is to make this the best project that we can, so that what we lost, we're going to get something better out of. That's something that we, as a community, as a commission, as a developer, all can say, we all work together, and we're going to build something that we can be proud of, that's going to be better than what was torn down. It's a pretty high bar because you're talking about a nationally historic landmark designed by a locally, if not statewide, if not nationally recognized architect with a company that had a national, if not global, history. So it's a pretty high bar to say, we're going to take this piece and elevate it into something that, as a community, we can be very proud of. From a site planning perspective, what I encourage you to look at is recognize that we are a unique city. We have a unique urban form. We are not something that might work in one location, may not necessarily work. But I think that if you look at it as trying to continue this urban form that we have, we are a, we're not a dense Manhattan, but we're not a sprawling Los Angeles either. We're kind of in the middle. I think the site that you have, given the acreage, would be very conducive to looking at it as building an entire neighborhood, taking it as an opportunity to building the Playing Card neighborhood, not just a collection of individual buildings plopped together on the site. There are several examples out there of these brownfield redevelopments that have created neighborhoods using housing, retail, offices, all integrated together so that they all relate, so that it feels like a cohesive neighborhood, and that that cohesive neighborhood relates to the other surrounding neighborhoods. So when you're walking down the street, you recognize that this is a continuation of a whole, and there's not that jarring stuff. And that comes into landscape and site planning, architecture. So all those are going to be working together. And what, fortunately or unfortunately, because you've committed to the site, there, we know that you're not going to back down. So we have, as a planning commissioner and as a community, the opportunity to sort of be involved as partners, in a sense, in developing this in a way that's going to benefit everybody. And like I said, we want to build better. But what better might look like is going to take some, give and take, some interactions, some discussion. And it's going to be, it's going to be a process. But I think that if we all come from a place of compromise and understanding and all working toward the same goal of being better, I think that we can probably pull this off and make it a great development. In terms of your zoning, if you were to read the ordinance that put the PUD on, you'll find language that addresses the apartment issue. Have you had an opportunity to read the ordinance?
Yeah, so we, we've been given a copy of the PUD. It was sent to Tom Teppier, our zoning attorney.
Okay.
So Tom did get it. So we reviewed it with Tom, and Tom did talk to the law department, I know as well. So I know Tom and the law department were the one that said we needed to have a zoning text. And that, which is why, if it's different, I'd be glad.
Well, I, I wrote the ordinance, so I can tell you what's in it. That's why, when the whole process, again, putting what happened in the past, as you see, there are three new commissioners. So whatever the old commission was composed of, or may have told you, that's completely out. We have a new administration. So we're all starting basically from fresh. The ordinance itself, and I, I'll have to, correct me if I misremember, it says that you can have apartments as part of a mixed-use, multi-use development. If that is what, if I'm remembering correctly, then you don't necessarily have to come through here for a underlying zone change map to the CBD. But I'll leave that, I'm sure, again, working together, we'll be more than happy to hear the application, put on those additional layers of public involvement. I think that just in talking to my neighborhoods, they want to be involved. They want to make this a great project. Some people, like myself, are very angry, frustrated, disappointed that the buildings had to come down. But as I said before, nothing, no amount of anger, disappointment, frustration, or lashing out at you all is going to bring those buildings back. We got to start going forward to come up with a project that we all can be proud of. You mentioned the office, which is a key component, especially in these times. We need the economic engine. We just can't have it be a apartment complex that 10, 20 years from now may add more services to the city than we're able to provide. So we have to look at it comprehensively. We're going to have to look at it slowly. We're, there's going to be a lot of give and take. And hopefully, I'm encouraged by the fact that you're here to, that you're willing to work with us when we suggest to you, you know what, maybe when you just look at the architecture, maybe don't think of what does a 21st century building should look like. Let's take a look at what was already there as a inspiration. It could be as simple as materials, sticking to more brick, more stone. It could be a more industrial aesthetic from the 19th century mills. It could be something, like I said, a complete neighborhood. And again, there are multiple examples out there that if you look at that type of architecture and that type of site planning, that's what I'm going to be comfortable with. That's what I'm going to be advocating for. And hopefully, as, as a community, we can all come behind that vision. So I would look at Glenwood Park in Atlanta. That was an industrial brownfield that was created a whole neighborhood that combined townhomes, offices, but they were all integrated. You don't have to have an office pad necessarily, more so as, look at it as an integrated neighborhood instead of your traditional apartment pad, office pad, retail pad. Let's build a neighborhood. Let's build something that people will want. Let's not have a park pad. That, to me, is what I'm going to be advocating for. I'm going to be pushing you towards, I don't, I can't speak for my other commissioners, but I'm just speaking for myself. That's what I'm going to be pushing you towards, because that's my definition of better. And again, I'm flexible enough to listen to your definition, but I think if we come from that understanding, we can sort of work it through, because you've got a long way to go with your permitting, just in zoning. If you're looking for tax abatements, that's a whole other little issue, because tax abatements are not, they're discretionary. We have to feel as a city and advocate as a city for something that's going to be beneficial to us. We lost a lot in Playing Card. It was a big, it's a big loss. But again, nothing's going to bring it back. So we got to push forward to make it worth losing if we had to. So that's my spiel.
I'm less into the historical part of it. I, that building was there my whole life. I rode my bike around that neighborhood. It was always manufacturing, and it was fine. And maybe there were some, certain aspects of it that were absolutely beautiful to certain people. But to me, I look at it and say, take those buildings down and put something better in there for the city of Norwood. Chris has a lot, and I think he made a point of saying, he doesn't speak for everyone. Chris has a lot of background in this stuff and some different definite ideas of what he feels needs to be there. I look at it and say, bring, bring some stuff to the table that's exciting to me. And, and I was ready for those buildings to come back. I'm ready for something new there. I'm ready for, for some new fresh air, you know, fresh life in that place. So I would like to see some of the historical parts kept, which you're keeping the.
The clock tower, the smokestack, the main factory, the main market hall in the rear. And then actually, we are, we're expanding the clock tower out one bay of windows because we want to incorporate that into a new building. While the building behind it couldn't be saved, we're trying to find a way to bring that back in.
That's one thing I would say about the clock tower over at LeBlanc Macino, that they've got the clock tower with a candy store underneath it. And it really is, it's not what I consider to be very functional. I would like to see a clock tower more functional, more used. But, but my, I'm not stuck on certain aspects of the, keeping the, you know, the historical part of that. PLK is a pretty progressive company, and typically, Peter Kleinkamp doesn't look for making his buildings look old. And so I recognize what they, what they typically go for. I'd like to see a mix of all that. I'd like to see you embrace the historic, you know, nature of the city of Norwood and all that, but also bring some stuff in there that, that puts us in the forefront, because that's the people you're selling to. It's, you're not going to sell to the preservationist, and you're not going to rent, and those people, not some of them. But there has to be an aspect of it that is, is new and catchy and trendy and where people want to be. And that's something I recognize, and I'm sure others recognize here, too. I'm sure Chris recognizes.
Oh, yeah.
But what, but we do want to have, you know, hold on to some of those things. Don't throw the baby out with the bathwater.
We want to honor the past. I mean, I do want to make that clear. Like, we were trying to keep landmark things as we saw them. One thing we've, like, we, we're on like Site Plan 14. I mean, we have so many versions of this thing, trying to make sure it's right. Because, I mean, as you said, we do know operations. We know what we need to do to be able to make this work. We know, but we also, you know, we'd love to have a brewery in the front. We've made that very clear. But we thought it'd be pretty cool to somehow have the brewery re-enter through the clock tower. Like, how do we create something that just, you know, helps us honor that, that all the public get access to? Because I think that's the key. The stuff that we are saving, we want to be public. Whatever those things are, whether it's a clock tower, like, because it is the people's building. I think, I sat back the other day and I thought, you know, what's, what's the most important thing? Is it really the buildings? And the more you listen to the stories, we have an amazing story that somebody emailed me. It's about the people and the relationships. Like, you know, I remember the people I worked with. I can't tell you anything about the building. And the building was cool. Like, I worked downtown. I worked in Chicago with a Marshall Fields building. That was neat. But I remember the people. So I think some of it is, you know, remembering the people you work with and giving them a place they can come back to and enjoy those memories. So I think we're trying to honor that as best as we can. And sir, Mr. Brown, I want you to know, I mean, when we had a national architecture search, we were very particular. I mean, we were, you know, we talked to big firms out of Atlanta, a couple other places. But Terry Shook, you know, he took South Charlotte and worked with Huma Hall from Bank of America, and they redeveloped that entire area. Some of the stipulations we had is, have you worked on a rail line? Have you worked within a historic context? Have you done these things? Like, this interview process in Calhoun was, was close to six to seven weeks of putting them through the wringer, because we wanted to make sure that they truly did get that site planning. And it's not that we just want a pad, but we also have to deal with, you know, how do you finance this stuff? Because what you have is in a more, a non-major city, to have a true mixed-use building is not the easiest thing to get a loan on or get a permanent loan on. So we also have to make sure we can actually build this thing. So it's not just, I mean, I absolutely, we are going to intertwine these things as much as we can. But like, if you want to go get a Freddie or Fannie loan, they're going to cap you at what, how much retail you have in the base of that building, because, especially because retail's hurting. So I, I do want you to know, we, we are very specific, like, hey, when you're coming down Beet Street or coming down Park Avenue, I need to see that market hall, and I need to see that clock tower. And when you look to the side, I want you to see the smokestack. Like, because we don't want to cut, to your point, we specifically drove to Rookwood and said, don't give me a clock tower like this. Because, I mean, it's case in point of you burying the smokestack and burying the clock tower, and it's the few elements you kept. So I love Rookwood, but I just, it's not what we are going to try to do here. But you're right. I mean, I helped do some of the very modern design that people either love or hate.
And unfortunately, I think that that's the tension. But again, this is just an introduction.
Yeah.
You should go have an opportunity. There's a lot of contemporary buildings out there that are beautiful, that people can be proud of going forward. That's not to say that we have to build a neo-Victorian. It's, we have a, we have a wide range of architecture that we can work with here. I think that the key component is going to be the materials, the simple things such as windowing and window proportions and making the building feel uneasy. Because what I'm struggling with, and you mentioned the modern stuff, is what I see being built, especially in the Oakley, that whole Oakley area with, and by Oakley, I mean, the movie theater, the Krogers, the apartments, it's quote-unquote mixed-use, but they're not talking together. They're not integrated together. I'm not, I don't, I do not anticipate you having a retail on the first floor of your buildings, all of your buildings. Maybe some, maybe, maybe it's appropriate along Beet Street.
Correct.
Because that's the site, I mean, that's perfectly appropriate. But going further back, maybe not so much. But I think that pad-like development that we see in the Oakley Station area is something that I cannot say to somebody, yes, we lost Playing Card, but we got Oakley Station, we got Oakley Station. Some of the modernist architecture, it's, it's coming down to the window proportions and the corner lines, simple stuff that with a few little tweaks, you can still get that contemporary zine vibe and that people will buy. But you still, as something that, as people walk by, they're not going, you don't want a building that they're going to love or hate. You want something in the middle.
Yep.
What is the green?
Yeah, the green. The green is a perfect example of both architecture and that integrated mixed-use. And I was actually.
They do speak to each other. When you said that, I was thinking, that's all.
The green, all integrated, Glenwood Park, all integrated, it's a new development. And green was done by Steiner Associates. Liberty.
Liberty Square.
Liberty Square. So there are examples out there. One of the places.
You're right. The Milicron, the Milicron property over there, when they developed that was, it does feel more, what he was, as he said that, I'm thinking, it is more pads, and you are separated, and everything seems to be sort of segregated. And you have the Kroger, and you have all those. But it's not really, it's not, it is walkable, but it's not walkable the way.
It's not a district. It's not.
It's not a, it's not a location.
It's not a location. Yeah. Yeah, and I think we, yeah.
It's chaotic.
That is, that's not our potential.
Something to consider, I guess. We're just having a discussion.
No, after all, we're studying everything from traffic patterns, like you say, because can we shut down those little roads at times and have events in the middle? And can we be a district that we want it to be? We absolutely, like, we're talking about construction traffic patterns, regular traffic patterns, if you have a music festival or outdoor event. You know, the brewery space that we want in the front, we want them to be able to actually help us program that green space, so that way you have that whole entertainment side outside of it. And it's a way to like, create a place that, the big thing is, you know, I'll start looking at it, when we, when we come to a lot of communities, the biggest pushback we hear is, I just don't feel a place for me. And I want people in Norwood to feel a sense of place when they come to the site, that you are welcome. We want you here. We like, we're trying to make sure that's, that's a key thing to our design.
And I think that that's where the important part of the beach, each road is you're going to be your important corridor, because it is the base of that project to the community. That's not part of that property. So, where, if you get that right, you could sort of gradually progress. Not that you will, but the, um, the scrutiny is going to decline as you get closer to the freeway, because less and less people see it. If you can create a project cohesively from beach to the freeway that, that feels connected, that, that has still the office pad, but the office pad relates to the apartment pad, because they're separated by an appropriately sized street with sidewalks and furniture, and it feels like you're walking in a district. A place that you've created, that's gonna be a bigger impact, a bigger and easier sell to. But us, when we approve it, to council, when they approve the zoning, to council if they have, if they are asked to approve the income, because what people are talking, they're excited, they're like the mayor, they wanna see new energy, they wanna see something develop. But again, they recognize we've lost the buildings. We're not tied to the past in a sense that we need to save them, because that didn't happen, it's unfortunate, we move on. But let's build something that's going to, everybody can get behind, everybody can be proud of. You can be proud of and make money. We can be proud of and say that we did our job. Council can be proud of and say that they brought energy to the city. The mayor can be proud of and say, I brought this project. I continued it going forward, and it's gonna be a win-win-win-win-win all the way down the line.
I have confidence in PLK. And quite frankly, because of his, you know, hometown, and this is where he lives, and where Kleecamp's a big name here, and, you know, you can't fail. They can't fail. They've gotta put a good product out there.
I probably hear that 10 times a day.
We are extremely lucky that, that PLK has taken this project on. I think that there are only a couple of developers in the Cincinnati area that could take on a project like this and really put a first-class project out. And I think PLK's qualified to do that, and that's, that's exciting for the city.
And if, sir, you could get me the copy of the most, I wanna make sure I have the right PD, because if we can make sure we have the right, if you can just email, if somebody can make sure I have the right one that we're reviewing, because again, maybe it's different documents, but I know Tom had worked on it before, and I just wanna make sure, and we will keep everybody in the, we fully, like, we know we wanna rewrite it. If anything, if we create more of that office feel or somebody else wants, we wanna make sure they're always maintaining the design aesthetic. If anything, we might be more stringent than the city's current standards.
Maybe, if I could suggest something, why don't we look at it this way as we're approving your project? Why don't you give us a pattern book of the building materials, windows, doors that you would like to see in your project? And then we can incorporate that as part of the PUD aesthetic.
Well, it's required.
Yeah, we usually do that, yeah.
You have a preliminary PUD, and you have the final PUD.
No, no, this is a pattern book. This is a basically, when, before there were architects, they would build these books full of, here's our windows that we offer, here's our door openings, here's our cornice lines, here's our materials. And you know what I'm talking about, a pattern book. They would provide us with a pattern book that says, every building has to comply with this architectural pattern.
Yeah, we're gonna get one.
I have seen the material.
This will come as part of our package, yes.
And we would approve that pattern book, so going forward.
Somebody else comes and they get their variance.
Anybody that comes in, they would have to comply with your pattern book, and we would, and if they don't, they would have to go through the planning commission process and explain to us why they can't comply with your pattern book. Now, that's gonna put a pressure on you to create a pretty good pattern book, but I think the work that's done on the onset, if we have an understanding of what the buildings are gonna look like based on the pattern, it's gonna make it a lot easier, again, to get the neighborhood behind us, to get the neighborhood buy-in, to get the council, everybody. We want this to be a win-win. Nobody wants to see that project fail. Our costs are opportunity costs. We have to create the best project we can that generates the most income for the city. Your costs are going to be the cost of construction, the cost of delay. Our costs are intangible, your costs are very tangible. So, recognizing us working together, we can cut down on those costs.
I don't have anything else.
We'll plan to meet at the next meeting, hopefully with some site plans and maybe even some 3D animations.
Are you planning on putting in a natural submission for a PUD?
I'll see how far we're along. Give me, give me about two weeks. I mean, I wanna take this, the survey, we're gonna shut down Monday at noon, because we've had enough now that they're basically roughly telling us the same things. We're kind of seeing the same trends grow throughout the day. So, I think with that, we can now make sure the site plan incorporates what the public has been saying they would like to see. And then we'll, we'll definitely be back at the next meeting. So, yeah, I will, I don't know if I need to do a full submission at that point.
I would think, and I'm just speaking as myself, from a, from a logistical standpoint, I think coming to us